The Tred Wood's share of one of the deaths that we have. So, that's also, that would also be built into that as well. If you'd like, I could, later on, I could provide you with the numbers specifically associated with the pilot versus the amount associated with the transfer for Tred Woods.
Electric fund revenues currently recorded in our system are 25 percent of the budget through the period ending September 30th. That's a $522,000 or 3.78 percent decrease from the same period last year. Customer service fees, just as a reminder, customer service fees were reduced 3 percent effective July 1, 2015, 12 percent effective September 1, 2015, in addition, 1.25 percent effective April 1, 2016. 24.87 percent of customer service fees have been recorded, which is a $489,000, 3.69 percent decrease from the previous year. Expenditures in electric are $13.78 million through September 30th, which is 25.08 percent of the amended budget. The biggest expense, obviously, with the electric fund is our wholesale power costs. The wholesale power costs have increased $447,000, while the personnel services, capital outlay, and debt service have increased $162,000, $183,000, and $106,000 respectively. Moving on to stormwater. Stormwater can be found on pages 28 through 33. Stormwater revenues are 23.15 percent of the budget through September 30th, which is a $13,000 increase from last year. Expenditures are $146,000 through September 30th, and 21.64 percent of the amended budget, which is only a $2,000 decrease from the prior year. Personnel services costs have obviously increased by $40,000. However, the repairs and maintenance actually decreased by $35,000, so that they ended up offsetting each other for the first quarter of the year. With that, it's just a very brief summary of some of the information that can be seen in this report. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of information here, and I know, giving it to you tonight, obviously, I'm assuming it's a lot of information to take in.
Yep. Just as a side note, it's staff's intent that you will begin getting these quarterly, so January, you should expect to probably see these again, and again, May, did that be right? January, May?
End of April.
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be as of April 30th, so you'll see it in May.
I'm sorry, it'd be as of March 31st.
March 31st, so it'll be in April, yeah.
Just some feedback from my perspective on this. Appreciate the information, but with, as you mentioned earlier, governmental budgeting and timing being so critical, and when you're looking at enterprise funds, John, you know, seasonality of winter versus summer, to me, I don't want to create any more additional work for anybody. To me, I'm not so sure that this quarterly report brings a lot of value. Maybe a summary, one page from you that says, hey, here's a couple of bullet points and things that are looking way out of line that you might want to be prepared for, but if this takes a lot of time and resources, I personally don't need it. That's just my opinion.
It takes a few hours to put together. It actually takes me longer to do the summary, to analyze where we're at with, you know, what some of the differences might be and that sort of thing, so.
I think it would be helpful to have the bottom lines. This is, these are things you need to be worried about. These are things that are rocking along fine, or going better than we anticipated, and take them off the worry list.
Not to speak for the city manager, but for the assistant city manager, and hopefully, Mark, I think these are valuable from our level, and then we will work with JR to summarize that to something appropriate for the board level. So, from my perspective, it's very valuable for us to know the kind of state and the details of where we are, and so then we'll turn that around into a summary for you guys. Totally understood, we need to pay attention to the audience and what might be of value to you.
Well, that makes perfectly good sense, because it's an analytic tool for senior leadership within the city staff itself. And I think it's a great idea to do it. But we need the takeaways, and why we need to worry, or cease worrying, or repeat something that worked better than we thought.
We most certainly can do that, and I think that's what JR tried to capture in the summary. So, essentially, it's kind of the summary, and maybe just a couple summary graphs, or sheets, or trends, or something like that. But essentially, this document here, I mean, he probably has to have the other 35 pages of this document to be able to draft the two pages that he gives to y'all. So, that's the reason why the rest of it's just included in the summary. But, once again, as Assistant City Manager spoke, we benefit greatly from it, because what it does is allows us to ask the questions to him as to, okay, why is this out of line? Why is this happening? And it's all about timing, most times, about when things get recorded and when they don't.
The other issue regarding the timing of this particular financial summit, that's the third Tuesday in October, is, I think, year over year, our final CAFR isn't quite done for the previous year, and we have just closed the quarter within the past two days to be able to provide this data for the first quarter of this fiscal year, and so it's very difficult timing, because we often don't have the quarter closed quite by this, you know, this, or the previous month doesn't always close by this date of the following month, and so it's just, timing is a little difficult for last year and for this year to provide this update as well. I know JR was scrambling to put this report together in the past day, because the quarter just closed, or we're really close to closing the quarter, and so then you've got to pull all that data together.
Just a, just a question for the board. The net activity summary of revenues and expenditures, would that, as you can see on page three, would that be something you all would find generally valuable by fund? You know, because, I mean, that would be, everything, that would be, I think, generally what you're asking for, without all the detail. And then, obviously, a bullet point associated with, maybe some bullet points, especially with the summary.
We'll work with the appropriate presentation of information. I think if you just look at that, it starts saying, well, why this and why this? It begs some questions, so we'll make sure we have the right information available to you every quarter soon.
The reason I say that, what the mayor brought up with the pilot, I mean, the pilot's not made the same quarter. This information, I mean, you're looking at three and two and a half billion dollars of government being off, and of course, that's going to lead to additional questions, so it's just.
Right. I think it would be helpful to have actual versus projected, and what the variance is, because if it's on track, then it's going okay, but if there's a huge variance, it's a oops, what happened?
Yeah. Yeah. I've done that in a previous life as well, too, to add a projected amount in there as well. Sometimes the projected amount ends up being what the budget is, because you don't have any information up front, but, so, we can.
I think that's where the summary sheet, the page three for each different fund, basically, that you see there, there's, I don't know the other pages, but he's providing, page 22 is the one for the electric, but essentially, the net activity summary with some bullet points underneath that as to why these things happened, I think, should give you the synopsis of, well, the pilot was accrued, you know, and actually came on the books during this period versus last year it didn't. That's a bullet point that could be added, that would detail the reason why you see that variance. I think that could be very easily done and captured and submitted to y'all quarterly, and if it raises any individual questions, then we're more than happy to.
Then y'all have got the background.
Sure.
Yeah, but I'm looking like at page four. If you had the projected versus actual, that right there is going to be an easy way to pop out trends, good ones or bad ones.
Sure.
Without getting so many numbers that people like me start losing focus. We need the bottom line, and y'all have to do this analysis to get the bottom line, so.
Mr. Stevens, where are we on your presentation list, would you say? A through F, where are we?
I think Mr. Savatelli is done with his presentation on item number one, A through F.
A through.
And at this point, it's questions or anything that you want to ask regarding his report? If not, we can move on to new business, whatever the board wishes to do.
Oliver White, you got something?
Yes, sir. JR, appreciate all y'all's work, and it gave me something to look through, and I guess learn a little bit more, pick up on some corners, and I will have some questions. Questions I have, I'll come and ask you about them, I'm quite sure you'll tell me.
Sounds good.
With that, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say that, out of all we are doing tonight, again, blood fact, talking about the money, some of the things in New Bern that really concern me right now are the culvert has never, ever been completed, Bucks Culvert under, I know this is not finance, but it is finance, over at Mockingbird Lane, that's a financial issue. Mr. Kinsey has some really issues that need to be evaluated with.
The culvert.
The culvert on this boulevard, if that is accurate, or if there are other alternative means of getting some of that water off of it at certain times. I know these are five-year events, but you know what? When they happen to the folks that it happened to, they're lifetime events, so it doesn't matter to me if they're five-year events or 50-year events, when they happen, the impact is horrendous on our residents. Another concern I have, and I'd be glad to be part of the study group, but I think of this group, and I think Mr. Blackston will be really good at this with his background. You know, all the departments, I think, are doing a great job. I mean, they've been around forever, and they're, I think they're really doing a really good job. The stormwater is such a new component of our government, that I don't know for sure, I know that, I'll have to say I would miss, I could be more up to date on the best of the best of what cities are doing. Is there some unique, I know in Europe, there's several different types of equipment that they're using over there that do the work of three employees that really, you know, do a good job of maintaining the ditches a lot more. There are some, there's some mechanization that can do that. So, again, you know, of what all we're doing tonight, again, it is financial, but then again, it is providing the best services, the best security, the best quality of lifetime residents. I do think that we need to look hard at stormwater and see, I know, again, we have not talked about it tonight, but in the last year, we have talked about. The rate, and again, the question begs, is there some capital expenditure, is there a certain state-of-the-art equipment that could assist? You know, Mark, a couple years ago, the DOT met us over at Trent Village Shopping Center with that new innovative piece of equipment that they cleaned out, that culvert, that type of stuff. So, again, I think maybe something that maybe staff and some of the aldermen, if there are aldermen, I'd say about three aldermen, that want to look into some study analysis of, in North Carolina, or in America, or some of that European stuff I've been researching, or there's some, or there's some pieces of equipment that could better get us a handle on the maintenance cost. You know, I get a lot of complaints about the drainage, we all get a lot of complaints about the drainage, and I think this own thing works good. I wonder, Mr. Overman, if a balance of impact periods of time, when we know storms are coming, that we maybe in stormwater should have a blend of staff folks and qualified independent contractors that can come on board for a two-week period to really step us up, and then when the event is over, we can go back to our normal. So, that's just some things I'm looking at, and that's your previous line of work, so give me your comments and thoughts.
I'd like to echo what the mayor says. I would say, I think we're looking at how we handle stormwater and the infrastructure that goes with handling stormwater, and I think in a community in the coast, where flooding is an issue, not having the, not investing in stormwater infrastructure is like not investing in brake pads. It may be penny wise, but pound foolish, and sooner or later, it's going to cause damage to life and limb, and I think we need to take a long-term look at it.
Obviously, to both your points, I'll go back from a historical perspective of when the stormwater utility was formed. The stormwater utility was formed as a maintenance-only division, and obviously, it was done with a limited amount of personnel. We have five staff on board, I believe, is that still correct? Five? Yeah, five staff and about five or six inmates, three inmates, yeah. We only get a certain amount of inmates, that's if we get them from, you know, Carteret Correctional Facility. So, we try to make use of what we have with the fee that was established of $2.10. As we discussed in the retreat, budget retreats last year, you know, most municipalities, I would say, were kind of an exception at $2.10. Most municipalities around our area are somewhere in the $4 range, four to five, somewhere around there, and that establishes the ability to do capital improvement projects. My worry is, is, you know, you go out and buy a piece of equipment, well, that either takes cash from the stormwater fund, or that takes a financing option from the stormwater fund, which means that, given, you have a pretty, you have a pretty definitive budget that you're working with, with stormwater, because it's based on impervious ground, and that impervious ground in New Bern doesn't change significantly over a one-year period. So therefore, you know, the cost to do business, gas prices may go up, tire prices, rubber may go up to operate and maintain your equipment, you may have staff increases in salaries or benefits, or whatever they may be, as employees age through the systems, obviously, that's a little bit more cost. So, when you have those types of things, as far as expense in personnel and operating and so forth and so on, it's very easy to, in budgeting, you have expenditures, you have revenues. The revenues aren't changing a tremendous amount. Yeah, we're adding some shopping centers here. Yeah, it's not like it's an ad valorem tax, it's just an ERU, which is an equivalent residential unit. So, it's a $2.10 per equivalent residential unit of impervious area, so it's not like it's a tremendous amount of revenue generating for all the economic development in a stormwater fund. So therefore, to do large-scale capital culvert projects that may cost $200,000, $300,000, and then you either pay cash or you finance them, to do those types of projects, you've got to have the revenue generated to do those sort of things, and that's, we established from the get-go, the board established and wanted to set the stormwater group as a Me, as an engineer, do I think that is best? No, I would say that we've got to reinvest, and that kind of goes to your point, Alderman, Mitchell, we've got to reinvest, just like we do in pavement, just like we do in anything else, because you have an out-of-side, out-of-mind mentality, especially when it comes to stormwater and underground infrastructure. I think Jordan would probably reiterate that with water and sewer lines as well. It's an industry-wide concern from public works, utilities, and utility operators of underground degradation of the systems, that there's not enough reinvestment. Pavement's something people can see, they see that new asphalt, and they see a reinvestment in that. Oftentimes, people don't see the reinvestment into underground stormwater infrastructure or water or sewer infrastructure, so therefore, it's perceived oftentimes as not as a, not as a good investment as a pavement would be, because they're actually physically riding on that. But I'll guarantee you that, as you pointed out, Mayor, for those who are impacted by the fact that a culvert doesn't work, or is not as sized properly as it should be whenever a storm comes along, then I will guarantee you, at that point, you'll be itching to look at some potential investment into some upsizing, or whatever it may be. So, that's the difficult line. It's, you have a very limited amount of revenue, how you want to spend it. If you don't want to raise rates, and you want to go spend $300,000 on an improvement project, there's, well, there's two ways you do it. You take it out of fund balance, or you reduce what your operating personnel is to get it done. But that's, I mean, there are, there are very many improvements that could be had across the city.
Well, maybe it's time to take a second look at a maintenance-only policy. We live in a coastal community. We have stormwater issues and flood issues. That's a fact of life, and it's not going to change. And just because things have been done a certain way, sometimes you need to reevaluate them and say, is this the best way? Maybe it is, and maybe it's not. With it, and take a look at that as the overall package. We've been very lucky, but sometimes luck runs out, and if this is, I will go back to my comment on the brake pads. None of us are out there taking the old ones out, stitching them together, trying to double them back up, and hope they work, and we would tell our teenage child, you're nuts. Okay, so we don't need to do the same thing with stormwater infrastructure either.
Oliver, yes, sir.
So, a word that Mr. Savatelli probably doesn't like to hear is co-mingle, and I guess my, I wasn't on the board when the stormwater fee or fund was established, so for example, our, just looking back through the numbers, our tax collection rate is probably going to be higher than what we've actually had budgeted, by the tune of $150,000 to $165,000. So now that we have an established enterprise fund with stormwater, you're, I believe I've asked this question before, and the answer was, you can't necessarily take that money from the general fund and move it over to the stormwater fund to do those projects?
It's not as if that you can't really, probably, that you shouldn't, I mean, you could potentially do that. If you budget, if you budget for that, it's not like electric, water, and sewer, where you're, where those are supposed to stay separate at all times. It's a little bit more fluid. However, you can't go the other way with it. You can't take stormwater funds and contribute it back to the general fund unless there's a purpose, like, you know, to cover the cost of accounting or something like that.
It just seems to me, again, from the outsider's perspective, that we've almost boxed ourselves into a corner now with stormwater infrastructure improvements, that we've created this enterprise fund, and when you have some remaining fund balance in the general fund, that you could allocate some to go do these projects, well, now we can't do it, because we have this specific fund, and we have to only address the revenues in that particular category through the rates. So, I'm certainly not advocating getting rid of the stormwater fund, but we did a very good job, the first two years we were in office of tightening our belts in the general fund. Maybe it needs to have another look at that and make some adjustments. I'm not going to be one that's going to be an advocate to raising taxes or raising rates on folks. I understand there's infrastructure improvements we have to make, but I've said from day one that until we're at a level that I feel like we're operating at a very high efficiency within the government, it's hard for me to justify passing on any additional cost to the taxpayers.
Oliver Blackston.
Yes, sir. Only comment I want to make, Mayor, going back to your initial comment there about culverts and whatnot, I don't know, I don't know if that impeded the traffic movement on Kinsey or any other, any other part of the city, but I can tell you that in the last week, Oaks Road travel on National Avenue has been impeded. So, you know, I'm going to be a broken record, come back to say that, that when we talk about maintenance versus capital improvement, we had some, we had an opportunity there, and I know staff is going to come back into Mr. Stevens' direction with some, with some more thoughts on that, but when folks cannot travel safely on our roads, that's an issue, whether stormwater, or paving, or whatever.
Andy, Matt, some finance. I want to mention one other thing. I was talking to Ms. Roberts earlier tonight about the number of folks looking at our Facebook page, and it's quite a few, and Ms. Roberts, if you could step out, I know you have a job in there, but if you could just come, if you've got a second, come to the podium. I was exploring an idea with her, that I'm, again, very chagrined, that we are not able to get the meeting out to more New Bernians and New Bern proper, and one part of that is the time war issue, and another part is some folks don't have cable, and I think that with not a lot of expenditure, but a little bit, we could, and just go ahead where we were going on that with Facebook, because I know nowadays, a lot of people are going to start watching that, and I think our meeting should be on Facebook.
They certainly do watch us a lot and are in tune with our Facebook page. Just in the last 60 days, we have gained 500 likes, so we're up to about 3,200 likes on our city Facebook page. I have spoken to our IT manager, Tony Gatlin, in the past about how best to accommodate a Facebook Live, so that we could carry our meetings live on Facebook like some other municipalities do, and his suggestion was an additional city cellphone, where those kinds of things could be broadcast from. You have to change your connections for other social media platforms that say you already use on your cellphone, that are your personal platforms, to accommodate a Facebook Live, and that just gets very tricky, going between those connections. Do you want to break your personal connection to now broadcast for the city of New Bern? Yes, I do, but doing that on a routine basis, I wouldn't want that to ever, someone ever to make that mistake, and all of a sudden be broadcasting from their personal page. So when we talked about it, his recommendation was an additional city cellphone that would be designated for those types of events, and multiple people could take it to, and attend that event to Facebook Live from it. So we'd certainly have that option.
I know a lot of folks, you know, they'll call me about a meeting, and they'll say, well, I don't have cable, and I'm, you know, like, I tell them, go to the web and watch it, but, you know, everybody nowadays is going to Facebook, and I just think we ought to do it. I don't know if the board have opinions on that, or you want to do this, or?
We added, we added three or four phone lines for the board for some purposes earlier, I don't know, another one would make a big difference.
So, Mr. Stevens, what do you think? Do you see a problem with that? I mean, I'd like to see a lot of folks using that, and, yes, sir?
Yes, I agree with you, there's a lot of people, a lot of residents, a lot of residents that are on Facebook all the time, all day long, other than the Pokemon, they're on the Facebook, and as you were saying, I'm at a lot of events, and a lot of others are at different events, that we can capture, and from, you know, things just like that for just that cause, and people do follow Facebook. I don't, but people do follow Facebook, so I think it's a win-win for the city. With 3,200 followers, likes, and 500 in the last 60 days, I think it's been going the right way. Social media is the way of life for that, for some reason.
Yeah, I think, I think it would probably be good for us as staff to research what the most effective, efficient way to do that is, is with either, with a, you know, a city cellphone that's meant specifically for that purpose, or even if we were to set up a computer with a webcam that actually has a connection, we, you know, we have fiber here, so I'm sure we could stream it. At that point, you're not paying for a city cellphone service. The only issue is if you are moving the meetings places and making sure we got connectivity, but ultimately, and you wouldn't be able to do live stuff out in the field, if y'all, you know, for events like badge faith and community, you might be able to have like a live show from that. That would be the benefit of having a cellphone, but, you know, if it's the board's wishes, we'll research every possibility that we can to bring that functionality to our distribution of live broadcasts, for sure.
Does the board want to take action on that tonight?
Are you looking for a motion?
Do we have any more information back from staff as far as?
Well, I just don't, I mean, I don't think you're talking about more than another cell phone.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we're talking about, I mean, I hate to spend the kind of money we've spent on Peg Channel and not take every opportunity to broaden the number of viewers, and I think, I think this is money well spent to, if we're going to go to trouble having all the things we have with Peg Channel, this is the next progressive step we're taking.
So, do they need instruction? Do we need to instruct staff to get more information, bring that to us, or do you want to go forward?
Well, you can just do it, break back Tuesday, next Tuesday night if you want to, and then we can do something.
Okay, we'll try to get it researched by then, but Adam, you know, from the cellphone perspective, we were just talking, I think, and Brendan, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at about 60 bucks a month, I think, is what we're looking at from a cellphone cost, is that correct? Somewhere around there?
Somewhere between 16 and 18, depending on the phone.
Depending on the phone, 60, 80 dollars a month, I mean, you're talking about 700, you know, 700 dollars a year, roughly, I guess, 800, you know.
I don't need y'all to go do any research and come back. I think we can make a motion and address that right now. That's a small sum of money.
Yeah.
But that does share data, so we have to look at a phone that has unlimited data if you're going to be streaming that much.
Mayor, was your primary concern the meeting broadcasts?
Well, it's just like, a couple weeks ago, out of
Well, it's just like, a couple weeks ago, out at Lawson Creek that day, calling you were out there, and I know you taped that long, but it's just been wonderful to see Alderman Taylor in that sack running, running around at the dead live.
He did lose to me, by the way.
I did eventually get him on video.
Yes, sir.
And so did Chief, by the way.
I know he wanted to brag, brag like Chief did, but yeah, just like the, the pet, David Pets down at the park, I was down there and I wanted to record it. I took a lot of pictures, but that would be an excellent avenue to do it that way, because there's a lot of events myself go to, and like I said earlier, a lot of people go to events that can't get you there, or, you know, something, so we can do that. I mean, I think it's a win-win. I think we need to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we direct the staff to purchase an additional cellphone and an additional data package for that cellphone, so that city meetings can be broadcast via Facebook.
Second.
Everybody's heard the motion. Is there any discussion on favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same. Are we into new business now?
Sounds like it may.
I think you all have before you a proclamation that if you so, would like to approve that. And Alderman, Mitchell, if you would update us on the Boys and Girls Club and what's going on in the circuit?
No, she go ahead.
Oh, no, I want you, you don't, you don't?
No, she updated, she made the motion, we found her. Go ahead. Updated is where we are, and then she just made the motion while she finished.
Anybody and everybody knows what's going on in Boys Club, let's all update the public. Go ahead.
Okay, the Boys and Girls Club is coming up on its one-year anniversary. We've gone from a tradition, from a absolutely nothing to a full fund, to several hundred students involved with it, and a full-scale summer camp this past year down in the downtown area. We're now moving at, towards looking at a separate facility for middle school and high school adolescents as well. So this has been a tremendous surge in community support for a fine institution, just really in the 15 months since it really got going. The one-year celebration was supposed to be two weeks ago, and then a week ago, the hurricane kept coming in, so it will be at 4:30 this Thursday on the 20th, the JT Barber. I encourage the Alderman and the mayor to come as well, to support our students and the parents who are, who are doing this. It's a fine program. And for that, we have a proclamation that we would, for lights on after school, that I would like to make a motion that the board approve for issuance, and the mayor to sign.
Sir.
Motion by Alderman. Mitchell, second, and by Alderman Taylor's a further discussion. On favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed the same. What other new business? Alderman, you got some new business?
Don't think so, not tonight.
Okay, all right. Alderman White?
Nothing I can talk about right now that I get with Mark sometime tomorrow when we talk about.
Alderman Kinzie.
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Mitchell.
Next.
Alderman Taylor.
Yeah, real quick, is it possible that we can, City Manager, Mayor, Board of Alderman, on this phone roster, is it possible that Board of Alderman phone number's going to be on the roster? That a proxy act or something that, I know I've never seen it, but could it possible we do that? Or y'all, I want y'all number up for the city staff.
Mayor.
You gotta think it'd work, or can it work?
If it's the board's wishes to do so, we're more than happy to do that.
Yeah, because I have a lot of staff to say, I couldn't find your number, that, I'm, oh, kind of excuse me, but I was just thinking this might be something good to put our number up there.
Yeah, I most certainly don't have a problem with putting your numbers on there, but obviously, I would, I would request the board that if it's staff-related issues and it's really kind of more operational things, that those be channeled through me, because that's, I'm, I'm your chief administrative officer. Obviously, you may hear concerns about things, and I would hope that you would bring those to me, and I would be happy to address those and discuss those with you. But I have no problems with putting phone numbers on there.
No, if you want to do it, that's fine.
Are you concerned that personnel might contact the Alderman?
I, I don't have a problem with personnel contacting Alderman at all. What I, what I would not prefer is a circumventing process of, you know, staff versus elected officials, I guess is what I'm saying.
I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying, City Manager, but I'm thinking, pretty sure all of us already had that encounter several times, and we know how to deal with those situations. But I was just considering that they would be able to reach out to us or anything, and we know if it's a personnel, we'll bring it straight to you.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I'm getting at. If it's personnel-related issues, that's, that's my job.
Right, yes.
Anything else?
One more. Bear with me, probably taking about two minutes, and very important, it has nothing to do with budget, but it's a very important issue that last year, last week, we had Hurricane Matthew come through, and since he came through, he devastated eastern part of North Carolina. And we received an email from Brenda today in reference to free legal assistance to North Carolina victims of Hurricane Matthews. I would like to read this email. Information that needs to be put out. I was going to wait till next week, but I think people need to know this information ASAP, so I decided to read it to people at home, so they know avenues that they can reach out. Dear community partners, I would like to inform you that disaster relief that legal aid and volunteer attorneys have provided to victims of Hurricane Matthew, a toll-free legal aid hotline is now available for victims of Hurricane Matthew in North Carolina. The service which allows callers to request assistance of a lawyer in a partnership between the North Carolina Bar Association and Legal Aid of North Carolina, the American Bar Association, Young Lawyers Division, and the Federal Emergency Management Agencies. Low-income survivors can, low-income survivors facing legal issues may call 1-800-662-7407. The assistant hotline activated by the North Carolina Bar Association. Callers should identify that they are seeking Hurricane Matthew-related legal assistance, ask for disaster legal services, and should identify the county in which they are located. Survivors who qualify for assistance will be matched with the North Carolina lawyers who have, who have volunteered to provide free legal help. Please see the, okay, now I'll read the number again. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Alderman Blackston?
Yes, sir.
I want to say one other thing before we conclude tonight. Probably one of the biggest things that in my 12, 13 years being on board, besides drainage and a couple of things like that, that I get hit with probably daily is employment. And the opportunity that's not there sometimes, that folks like myself, their children get raised, they, they move out of town, they don't stay in New Bern because they can't find a job. And one very important thing happened today, Alderman Blackston, Alderman Odom, I don't know if anybody else is there, Alderman White. The ceremony for the first step of a long journey that's going to bring a lot of job opportunity, a lot of economic opportunity in New Bern, a lot of trickle-down economics that we, none of us can estimate at this time. But I heard today that if the UNC Cancer Center, in conjunction with partnership with Craven Regional, were open today, they could, they could bring us 100, they could bring us 100 patients to New Bern today. And with over 2,000 jobs already at that hospital, and, and the size and the rating, five-star rating of Craven Regional, the only hospital east of I-95, and, you know, one very important thing, which I've never talked about, which was publicly discussed today, is the, is the umbrella lobbying end of what the hospital has done to, to help keep Cherry Point open. Because a, a large amount of business at, at Craven Regional is in, is in conjunction with Cherry Point. And so not only from the lobbying standpoint, but again, just back to, you know, it's great Publix is open, and it's great that the new shopping center's coming, and it's great that Moore's Barbecue opened, but I don't have anything that's any bigger than the announcement today. And I can't help but tell you that I'm so thankful to Champ and ET Mitchell that what they did to make that happen, because it's always, from wherever I lived in, in North Carolina, it's always taken the first person, the first family to step up and make it happen. And it happened, it happened big time today. And I just want to publicly thank Champ and ET Mitchell for what they've done to, to get it going. And you're going to see some really big things in New Bern because of that. And I just want to thank them for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, so may I ask, have any comments or anything? Anything further to come before the Board of Alderman at this time?
Dr. Maxwell.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. On favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed the same.